Court order for this special meeting for September 24, 2025. I'd like to ask everyone to turn their phones on silent or turn them off. We do not have a very lengthy agenda. Commissioner Lewis is with us by virtually and he has a medical appointment this week. So at this time, I'm going to ask William if he would say the invocation for us and then we'll have a roll call.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you today seeking your guidance and your wisdom in the decisions made here and that they would be made for the betterment of this county and the people there in. Lord, we ask that you keep your hand on the people that are fighting sickness and illness and their families. The Lord just look after the afflicted. We ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to approve Penny Burke to serve as a temporary court clerk since Christine is on vacation?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. Yes, we have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Ed Keaton if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the September 9th meeting of the Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a presentation by the Big Sandy chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. We have Ed Keaton. Ed, who else do you have with you? If you'd like to come on up and you can have a seat at one of the microphones.
Oh, you can go there where the microphone is either way.
What do you want me to do?
No, sir. It's the other way around. Wherever you want to be, we'll make. You can come right up here if you want.
Okay. Well, by way of introduction, my name's Edward Keaton and I'm from West Liberty and I'm also president of the Big Sandy chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. Now, all my jewelry, this has to do with the badge of office. This is a Maltese cross with George Washington's relief in the center and all members of the Sons of the American Revolution get this medal. Now, since I'm president, they even endowed me with this ribbon, which is colors of George Washington's uniform. You've got to now, this organization, and it's the same for Ms. Esther's DAR chapter, the qualifier is you have to have an ancestor, a direct proven ancestor that participated in the American Revolution. Now, let me ease your minds. I mean, I've been from Eastern Kentucky since, well, 1776, that's quite a time. So I'm, you know, all of us here in Eastern Kentucky, if you look back far enough, you're going to find an ancestor. Now, if you moved in last year from New York City, I can't vouch for you. But if you're from Pike County and you've been here a while, you're going to qualify. That's the defining thing about DAR and SAR. That's who we are. And we do projects to promote the history of the Revolution. We do projects to honor those who fought, who suffered and died. We find graves of Revolutionary War veterans. We put markers up. That's the kind of things we do. We try to always bring to our mind our forefathers, what they did, what they sacrificed for. You know, somebody once old pine smarter than I, that you die twice. You die the first time when your heart stops and you die the second time when your name is said for the last time. We even have a program. We get up and I say the names of all, I think I've got 16 who participated. I say their name in a meeting out loud. And what's the point? They're still alive, at least in my mind. I don't know if there's a lot to it. That's what we do. That's who we are. Now, what I'm here today is to talk about the bench. If y'all have looked at here by the doughboy, there's a bench in that area turned around here, but it's, if you go out the door, it's on the left and it's a nice granite bench and Big Sandy chapter, Paco DAR. We installed that. But I want you to know right now, why I come today. We couldn't have done it, or at least it'd have been a very tough job if we had not had the assistance and the help from Ray Jones, Judge Ray Jones, the Pike County Fiscal Court and Ms. Jeanne Robinson. As in most places, at least everything I've been associated with, there's always something wrong when it's pulled the shell, you know, we know how it goes. So I really came today to thank you, thank Pike County for all the assistance. We did one in Morehead Saturday and they helped, but maybe I'm just partial to Pike County. But y'all did a great job and we did one and we're going to do one in Preciousburg and we're going to do one in West Liberty. Now, let me tell you about this bench that I, you know, as I told Jeanne, if I get going too long, one stands as amazing grace and I'll sit down. You don't have to work on me too hard. These benches are celebrating the 250th year of the American Revolution. Next year it is, not this year. There's so many activities, you can't crowd them all in one year. So we started early to do them and we'll be doing them after next year or maybe on, well, the Constitution was ratified in, let's see, in 1791. So at least go through that. And the bench here and the bench that's in Round County now is going to be in Floyd County and Morgan County. It has a utilitarian purpose. You could sit on if you want to. I have no objection. But if you look at it, it says the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution and it's a reminder to everybody that passes that bench. You just take a glance, maybe just for a moment, you'll think, I don't want to forget about that. I don't want to forget how important that event was. We're here today, right here in this courtroom because of that event. And that's why that bench is there. And that's why the ones in Round County and this will be one in Preciousburg and West Liberty. So, you know, I don't want to get too wound up about all this. But I create the certificate and so can Mrs. Taylor, she's a region, the AR chapter, and some of my members back there, Sam and Roger, they're members of my chapter of this AR. We want to present a certificate of appreciation to this court for all the help you gave. Good and hard to know about you. We really appreciate it. This time I make a focus of course.
You may, you may, Ed.
This is from the Paco chapter DAR. And it's to Ray Jones of Pike County Fiscal Court, the Dollars of American Revolution Certificate of Award, American 250 bench installment, signed by Esther Taylor, Regent. And I would present that to you, Judge, and to the Pike Fiscal Court. I may say that one last, that might be one of the court. Now, this is my certificate, our certificate, Sons of American Revolution, this to the Pike County Fiscal Court for the Big Sandy chapter, Sons of American Revolution. I would present that to, I guess we have that fiscal court member here?
He's a deputy judge. We can give that one to Ron.
There you go, sir. That's for the fiscal court.
Okay.
And this one, honor of Ray Jones, Pike County Justice X. And that's our certificate award, Ray.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
We appreciate. Why don't we, why don't we get the court members around and we'll get asked to come up?
I've got one that's probably more important than that.
Okay, okay.
Jeanne Robinson.
That is more important.
Here we go, Sandy. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And yes, I would like to do that.
Let's absolutely do that. Ask you if you'd like to come up, you and Sam and Roger, if y'all want to come up. Bring it with you. Bring it. Jeanne, come on.
Okay.
Your brother, she can hold that one. I'll hold this one.
I'll find that to sit in my own. Okay, here we go.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you all cover for our beginning there?
up.
Ryan, do you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay. So Ed, with the court, with, with, with the indulgence of the court, I'll tell you how I met, Ed. I haven't been practicing law too long and I had never done a felony criminal case. I had one. The guy came in, asked me to represent him in a little matter in Morgan County. Well, Assistant Commonwealth Attorney was Ed and I learned real quick that I wasn't going to be able to get this old boy out of it real easy down there. Ed taught me a lesson, a valuable lesson about coming to Morgan County and trying to get a Pike County guy out of trouble. But Ed, I never did tell you that guy never did pay me. So I learned right then and there. So, so I learned right then and there that I didn't get paid and, and he didn't get out of it. So that was my last criminal case that I ever did. And you did me probably the biggest favor 25, 26 years later. I'm still not there. But Ed, let me, let me say this. You know, my family history goes back and I had a friend of mine who was with Daughters of American Revolution. She sent me the information that, you know, that I had ancestors that fought in the American Revolution and, but my family's history goes back in Eastern Kentucky, back into the 1700s, early 1700s. We've traced it back. And when you look at that, the Doughboy statute, my granddad has a first cousin who lost his life in 1944 in, in France, fighting the Nazis, fighting fascism. And when you look at the names on that Doughboy statute, a lot of those names from World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, some of those were my dad's friends that he fought, that grew, grew up with. My dad's a Vietnam vet. Those names are Pike County names. They're Ratliff's and Justices and you can just go, you know, Tacketts and so forth. Names that have historically been here. And I felt it, when you called me about this, I felt it was appropriate to have that bench out there because, you know, not only do we need to remember those who, who gave their lives fighting, you know, dictators and evil regimes that are on that, on the Doughboy statute, but you know, it all started with the Revolution. If it hadn't been for some courageous patriots, we would all be still probably operating under the, under the English crown. We would still be
John S. King.
One of the Commonwealth of, one of the Commonwealth and part of the Commonwealth of nations as opposed to being an independent country. And, you know, this American experiment of ours has lasted a lot longer than a lot of attempts at democracy or a democratic republic, if you want to be, I guess, more correct about it. But it's under, a lot of people think our democracy is under attack. I mean, you know, all the freedoms that our ancestors fought for, the Revolution, you know, the Civil War, we've had our ups and downs in this country, but we're still a strong nation. And I think that fact that you and the members of the Sons of American Revolution, the members of the Daughters of American Revolution have not forgotten what got this all started, I think is important. Because I'm not sure that a lot of our young folks really understand the history of how it started and why it started. And the thing that, one of the things that was seared into my mind at an early age is, and I'm sure Fabian grew up with me, probably is the same way, was 1976, the bicentennial was a huge, huge deal. And we celebrated that. We celebrated the birth of our nation. And I remember distinctly that, that my grandmother was collecting seven-up cans because they were special commemorative cans that when you stacked them a certain way would have a pictorial display commemorating the bicentennial. And, but, you know, we would be remiss if we did not honor the sacrifice of those people, like you said. And I never heard it put that way. You know, you die twice and I will not forget that, you know, once when your heart stops, but when the last person mentions your name. You know, 200 years, people probably won't be, from now, people probably won't be mentioning our names. But for those people who fought and gave us our freedom, their name should live on. And I appreciate what you have done to, to make sure that it's not forgotten. And I hope at some point, my children have grandchildren down the road, and I think I can speak for all of us, those are lessons that should not be forgotten, but all too often are forgotten. Thank you very much, sir. And you are always welcome. I miss my friends in Morgan County. I've got a lot of friends down there. I love Morgan County. I've had the privilege of representing Morgan County for a long time in the Senate. And one of the, one of the greatest honors I ever had was representing the people of Morgan County. And it's, it's a county I love very much. A lot of people I really care about. And I appreciate it. You called me and thinking enough about us to include us in this.
Yeah. Liberty and West Liberty. The first county seat, the first county seat of Pike County was Liberty. It was Liberty. And we were down the road from Preciousburg. Well, we're west of there. We'll just be west of there.
That's, uh.
We all change it.
Yep. Liberty and West Liberty.
So now everybody wants some wise west of Liberty, east of Liberty. I got the answer.
That's the answer.
Thanks a lot.
Ed, good seeing you, my friend. Take care of yourself.
I want to, I want to thank you so much for what you do and your, all the people that help you. I appreciate it.
And I think there's somebody I need to say something to. Paul, we're with you.
Yeah.
Paul, thank you. I've already heard a good shovel, man. You're the man that gets it done.
Paul's the man that gets it done, Ed. Thank you. Good seeing you, my friend. Next item is the awarding of bids. Greg.
I have a couple of things, Judge. We had a bid opening yesterday on bid number 27-2025 for one 2022 or newer articulating truck. This is an articulating truck that we've been renting from Boyd Equipment in our landfill for about the last six months. We decided that's really the kind of truck that we need over there instead of a 10-wheeler. It will do a lot more, go a lot more places at the landfill than a 10-wheeler dump truck will. Like I say, we've been renting it for the last six months. Boyd has a program- Like I say, we've been renting it for the last six months. Boyd has a program. If at the end of six months you decide to go ahead and buy it, they will credit you with the six-month rental fee. And we were paying about $11,800 and some dollars a month. So if we buy it now, you know, we get all that money deducted from the total price. This is about a half a million dollar piece of equipment new. After taking off those rental costs, we can buy it right now for $205,984.12. That also includes a service agreement and a warranty.
Is it on a state contract?
It's on, that piece of equipment's on a state contract, but state contract's for new equipment. This is a, this is a pre-owned. This is a 2022 truck. So I just went ahead and bid it.
So, so this is, it was put out for bid?
Yes. Yes. And that was the bid opening we had yesterday. The total cost would be $205,948.12. The truck meets all the specifications they're putting in the bid package. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Boyd Equipment.
I want to say something. It's been sort of, I guess I've got the liberty to say whatever I want. But, you know, you get these people that want to go on Facebook and criticize us for buying equipment and stuff. The simple fact of the matter is, you can't pick up 17,000 customers' garbage and dispose of it every week without having the equipment to do it. And, you know, this court shouldn't have to apologize for people for making sure we've got the equipment to do the job that we were hired to do. I just want to mention that. Because I think some of, some of these people want to make absurd comments. Had one guy that was commenting about us buying new trucks for the road department. I said, what do you want us to use? Wheelbarrows and shovels to fix them? I mean, we could buy some donkeys, but, you know, you gotta feed them and have a place to put them. And they, you know, take a long, long time to get around the county on a donkey. It's just stupidity is what we have to deal with sometimes. And we need to buy this piece of equipment to make sure that we can continue to operate our landfill.
And we can buy this truck cheaper than we can buy a new.
We could turn around and sell it and make money on it.
Right. We could buy it cheaper than we could buy a new 10-wheeler. And this is, this is twice the truck for the use we have at the landfill for it.
It's very good for where you're at.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to award bid number 27-2025 to Boyd Cat and authorize issuance of payment for the same out of the solid waste account for 205,984.12. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. By Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions? See you. No matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
It's my understanding that we have one of the side-by-sides that our trail system is in pretty rough shape. I think it's an 18 model and it's been working up there ever since we started. It's got to the point to where they're spending a lot of money on it, trying to keep it on the road.
I'll make a motion to buy this side-by-side for the trail system. And I want to say this, people may criticize us buying something for the trail system. Jerry Atkins has worked his guts out and a lot of other volunteers to make this happen. We had people talking about developing tourism in this county for years and years and years and nothing happened. We've had people from 36 states in two countries, Mexico and Canada, come to visit our trail system. That's money that's coming into the region. It's exposure for our county. And it's something that would not have happened if the prior court in this court had not committed to developing tourism. Tourism is not going to fix the problems with the loss of coal jobs. It's not going to happen. But tourism is a piece of a long-term economic development strategy to try to change and diversify the economy here. It's one of the reasons we've worked hard to try to clean up illegal dumps. It's one of the reasons we've tried to stop people from littering. It's one of the reasons that we've tried to clean the county up and get rid of, we downed his work to try to get rid of some of these blighted properties. Jerry, I want to thank you for the work that you've done on, on the trail system. And you were the right guy for the job. And you've made a lot of things happen. And we're working to get the trail started over on the Blackberry, Buskirk, McCarr part of the county. And eventually, the plan is to try to link the two trailheads together. And that's a big deal, as big as this county is and as many property owners and and now though we have the state legislation, it might make it a little bit easier to do that. But we can't run a trail system and police it and maintain it without the equipment to do it. You're not going to get, I mean, the alternatives, when, when we go back to the magistrate system, which I think will be interesting to see if they all get them a truck and hire their wives as a secretary and rent an office off themselves. I think that'll be an interesting, interesting dynamic to see exactly what the magistrate form of government brings back to Pike County. I know what it gave to Pike County before I came in. The county was broke and we were bouncing checks and bad audits. People have a short memory. People want to go back to magistrates. That's what we're going to do. It'll be interesting to see if the next fiscal court continues its commitment to developing tourism in the county, or if they'll just decide they would rather hire their wives and rent an office off themselves and get them a new pickup truck. So the simple fact of the matter is, we need this side-by-side to keep the trail system running. And if the next court wants to shut down the trail system, that's their prerogative. They can do it and they can sell the side-by-side or they can do whatever they want to, whether they can ride in hillbilly days.
I actually got two quotes on these, Judge.
All right, go ahead.
I got, I got one quote from McCoy Motorsports here in Pikeville. It's for a 2026 Can-Am Defender Pro XT. McCoy Motorsports submitted a price of $24,051.46. I also got a quote for the same machine from YPK Motorsports of Pound, Virginia. Their price was $24,953.74. So McCoy Motorsports is about, about $900 less expensive than the same machine from Pound.
My, my motion is to buy this 2026 Can-Am Defender Pro from McCoy Motorsports here in Pike County for $24,051.46, authorized payment for the same. And also to require that we buy safety nets, if it's not equipped with safety nets over the side windows, to prevent, in, in the event of a rollover, to prevent, you know, an extremity from being coming through that. There's been some issues with that. So that's my motion, to buy it, issue payment for it, and to require that, and those window nets are only about $100. But it could keep somebody from losing an arm or injuring an arm if you were to have a rollover or something. I think should be standard equipment. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions? See you. No matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Next item is Pike County Road Supervisor's report. Fabian's going to have a really nice, powerful report for the next court meeting.
Hey, Judge?
Yes, sir.
On, before we move on, I just want to ask Greg real quick. Mike Hall, the deputy coroner in Belfry, has got a, his, his vehicle, he's really in bad need of a vehicle. And Kevin had called and me and Kevin had talked about it. How long would it take for us to, I guess, put a bid out in order to get Deputy Hall a coroner's vehicle? He was preferably looking for, you know, just a minivan, all-wheel-drive minivan, preferably Toyota, he said, but that's what he seems like he's got the better service and stuff out of. How long would it take to get that in?
It, it wouldn't take long to put a bid package out. Most of the time when we're doing that, we're buying a specially piece of equipment. I look around and see what I can find and, and then make sure I get a bid package to those people. I was informed of that the other day by Jeannie and I actually called Kevin Hall, who's our coroner, and told him that, you know, through you, I heard that they were needing one at Belfry and, and so I, I've kind of left it in his hands. I said, you know, you all figure out what you need and what we need to do and I'll help you any way I can. And so I'm just waiting to hear back from Kevin Hall, our coroner.
Okay. Okay, that'd be good. I, I'll just let Mike know, I mean, about how, I didn't know how long the process took and, and that's more or less what I was asking.
If, if we buy something that's on state contract, we just locate and get court approval and buy it. If we bid it, I mean, we just have to locate what we want and get a bid package to those people, advertise in the paper for seven days, then do a bid opening, then present it to the court for approval. So it's not that long of a process. As soon as, as soon as Kevin, you know, lets me know which way they want to go, I'll be more than glad to do that. We, we do have one in the capital budget for the coroner's office.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anything, we've got the Pike County completed work orders and the scheduled work orders. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions? See you. No matter what, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. I want to touch base. You got anything you want to add, Fabian?
No, I'm good.
We got, we're going to have a longer presentation. So, so let me, let me just, and we've got the newspaper here and we've got Pike TV here, and I hope people will listen to this. I'm getting calls from people wondering why their damage from the flood in '25 hasn't been fixed. Well, let me be very clear about this. The fiscal court has not received one penny from FEMA as a result of this storm. Now, that doesn't mean we're not going to. It just means they've not completed their assessments. And I will say this quite candidly, they are scrutinizing everything that is submitted to them, probably more so than in the past. Not just in Pike County, but Floyd County. I've talked to the folks in Floyd County. I've talked to folks in other counties. I had a conversation last night with the State Emergency Management Director. I appreciate why they're doing it. However, I think it is dragging the process out. But right now, we're getting ready to pay the bill pay list here in just a second. Getting ready to do treasurer's business. We are getting ready to authorize payment for the Middle Elk Bridge, almost $2 million. Just for one bridge, $2 million. The only money that we've received is a little over $4 million from the state to help through the safe fund, to help offset some of the cost. Now, this doesn't, that was to help cover the $4.5 million that we already were out of pocket, out of the county's treasury. Start, when we did this budget, we didn't plan on having a big flood on February 14th, 2025. We didn't set $4.5 million aside to pay for flood damage or emergency response to that flood. We recovered that money. But now, we're getting ready to send about half of what we got from the safe fund straight back out for one bridge. And I have people messaging me every day. We will not be able to start the permanent repairs on this stuff, on the damage, on the three, more than 3,000 sites of damage until we get funding from FEMA. I mean, when you have somewhere around $50 million in damage, the county probably, if you took payroll and everything, all the money that we have discretion of, what would you say, 24 million a year, Frankie? So about 28 million is what we have to cover. All the county's operations. Fire department assistance, senior citizens assistance, public works, the road department, administration, solid waste, everything county does, we've got about 28 million. And most of that goes in salaries and benefits in day-to-day operations. If we took everything the county would spend in the next two years, everything would barely be enough to cover, and that's not paying any of your employees, not providing any benefits, not paying the light bill in the courthouse. Two years of funding for the county to pay for this. It's not possible to do that. FEMA is an instrumental part of fixing this and we've not received any money from FEMA. Once we start receiving reimbursement from FEMA for some of this stuff, then we can start either doing the repairs in-house or trying to hire contractors. And I'm hopeful that the General Assembly will increase the additional funding for the EK Safe Program in, when they go back in session. But I do know this for a fact, you know, we were approved for travel trailers for emergency housing. We've got the FEMA hazard mitigation that's going to do the buyout program. For the last two floods, the April and May floods, FEMA has not approved, for central and western Kentucky, FEMA's not approved any emergency housing for those, and they've not approved any hazard mitigation money for those. We got very lucky that we're getting hazard mitigation money to help with the buyout here. But what I'm telling you is, the county cannot start the long-term permanent repairs to this damage until we get the FEMA money. Now, let me say something else. We had a lot of projects on the drawing board from 2022's flood. And one of the things that's made this more difficult is when you have two major floods in less than three years, two and a half years, projects that we submitted for the 2022 flood. So let's say Lizzie Fork of, of Canton. That'd be one, right, Fabian?
Yeah.
If you had 250 feet of, of embankment failure that needed drill steel and to be fixed from '22, we're having to go back now if there's another 100 feet or 150 feet or 250 feet or 500 feet. And we're having to separate out the old damage from the new damage in order to do that. And I think we've had people call, well, why did you start repairs and not finish the whole thing? Well, because the part that was repaired initially was from the '22 flood. That was a separate project. We've not received money to fix the '25 damage. So people are asking, well, why did you come in and only fix part of our damage? Well, that's why. And a lot of people don't understand that. I didn't, I didn't make the FEMA rules. Ronald didn't and Bubby didn't and Freddie didn't. But we're stuck with it. And let me be very clear about this, and I hope Terry will put this in the newspaper, until we receive funding for FEMA for the, to cover the, the 75% of the long-term repairs, a lot of this stuff's not going to get fixed. Because we don't have $50 million laying around. We had some folks go on a, on a community page. They were very brave up on Long Fork at Marshall's Branch. And they weren't criticizing the county because their road hadn't been fixed. Well, if we had $600,000 or $700,000 laying around, we would have already fixed it. But we don't have the money. And the county's not received the money. And when the county receives the money, then we'll start repairing those projects. Now, all of us were last month, or I guess earlier in the month or end of last month, were in Louisville for the Governor's Local Issues Conference. And I don't think anybody here, Republican or Democrat, is going to dispute what was said. So far, at that time, from the 2025 flood, FEMA had only authorized 10 projects for the entire state. Was that right? Am I wrong? Am I, am I exaggerating that? Every project, now, some of those projects, they only, the 10 would have multiple sites in them. But every project over $100,000, we were told, has to be approved by Homeland Security Secretary Kristi Noem personally. Is that what we were told? If I'm, I'm not mistaking that. I'm not making a political statement. That's a factual statement. We were told there's 18,000 projects on her desk waiting approval. So if you wonder why your road's not been fixed, if you wonder why this stuff's not been fixed from the '25 flood, you need to email the White House and ask them to expedite Secretary Noem's processing of these claims. All I know is what I've been told. I don't know Secretary Noem. Don't have any friends that work in the White House. I'm not sure if you all do or not.
No, I don't.
But the simple fact of the matter is, until they process those projects and the money's released and their projects are obligated, they're not going to get fixed. It's just that simple because the money's not there. Y'all want to add anything? You are getting, I'm sure you're all getting calls too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, several.
And it's made worse by some of these people running for magistrate that they could fix all these problems and do better. The simple fact of the matter is this. They don't have any solution to get the money either.
Judge, I've had a lot of people to call me about that. And I told them, I said, they will be fixed. I said, well, we ain't collected a dime to fix it.
Well, let me, I'm going to disagree with you, Ron. And I'm going to tell you why. We don't disagree often. If we get the money, they'll be fixed. We don't know that, that they're going to be fixed. I talked to one other county judge, and I'm not going to mention names. He said that the process for their claims has ground to a halt. He says that FEMA is going back through Google Earth, trying to find any reason they can to dispute every claim for damage. Fabian, am I wrong? I mean, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. I mean, I've been wrong before. It won't be the first time. But the simple fact of the matter is, they'll get fixed if we get money for them.
That's, that's what I was saying.
If we don't get the money, they ain't going to get fixed.
There ain't no way. Too much of it, I think.
Judge, I, I'd like to, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'd also like to say this right here, you know, going into this year, I know this year's coming, an election year, I'm not. coming, an election year, I'm not so sure that, that, that we can do this. It's just something that I'm throwing out there. But as far as like an ordinance, you know, if, if God blesses me to get through this surgery and stuff, and I can come out, my plans is to run for magistrate. But I would like to say this upfront. I would love to vote if we could get a, I, I would make a motion right now that magistrates does not get vehicles, nor do they need secretaries, because we've done this job in areas three times bigger than what our areas is going to be, and used our own vehicles, our own truck, our own fuel, our own mileage, tires, all that. I think that, I mean, this court is in a financial bind. Our county's not making the money like it used to make. We don't have coal severance tax rolling in like it used to roll in. And for anybody that's running for these positions, I think that it would be fair for everyone to know that Pike County is not going to, and I make a motion, we're not going to buy vehicles for magistrates, nor are we going to hire secretaries.
Well, I tell you what.
And I think it needs to be made a motion, and, and if, if we can possibly do that.
Freddie, what we can do, we can't do it in this special meeting, but I'll get Roy to, to draft a proposed ordinance that we can act on, that will basically say that magistrates shall not be provided take-home vehicles, offices, or secretaries. Because, you know, I represented, I represented five counties in the state senate. I use my staff at my law office to cover all my scheduling and all that. I drove my own car. If I had to go to Morgan County, or I had to go to Elliott County, or Lawrence County, or Martin County, or when I represented Letcher County, I paid my own gas. They covered stipend for us. It was about, I think it was 1,500 or 1,800 a month, but I had to pay tax on that. I spent more than that in gas every month than being out of my law office. We will have an opportunity to set the salary in the spring for the incoming magistrates. And I've always made the argument, and I'm going to have, William, William, I want you to do me a favor. I want you to see, get with CAECO and everybody else, and let's get a comparison. I want to know what every county in Kentucky pays their magistrates. Because I've always said, in the past, our magistrates made more than schoolteachers who had master's degrees for, for a job that's essentially a part-time job. And we need to set our magistrate salaries in the future commensurate with the time involved and commensurate with what other counties do. I know in some other counties, they're getting $1,800, $1,200, $1,500 a month. That's what they're getting. And some of your bigger counties don't pay anymore. But William can get us the list, and we'll be able to compare it with counties our size geographically, like Pulaski County, and also population-wise. We want to know counties that have about 55,000, 56,000 people, what they're paying their magistrates. And then the court can decide collectively what they want to set them at. And then the public will know what those salaries need to be. And, but I think we can get an ordinance together. You know, I, the, the county judges has, office has a vehicle assigned to it. We've had that vehicle about three years. It's got 20,000 miles on it. I don't drive it. I mean, I, I don't drive it every day. I saw Sheriff Scott today, was in his personal truck. In order, we have saved, since I've been judge, tens of thousands, if not more, in, because we don't have take-home vehicles. We're not paying fuel for everybody to drive back and forth home, just like most people listening to this at work, their employers don't usually provide them a vehicle. We've saved massive amounts of money in fuel and tires and wear and tear. And the public needs to understand that, and I think it would, it would help instill confidence in public servants if the people knew they weren't getting special perks out of it.
I, I just don't think that, yeah, and I'm just being honest. I don't want to make nobody mad. I, I really don't. I'm speaking from the heart. I really am. I'm not trying to knock nobody out of nothing, but I just think that, you know, our county is in a bind. We're not like we used to be with severance money and all that. And I think that if there's cuts that be made, that it needs to start at the top, is where the cuts need to be started at. Don't need, you know, you know what I'm saying. It don't need to be on the black top or on the service to the people of our county. It needs to start at the top. And, you know, the, the magistrates don't, I, I don't, I just don't see where we need, whether I'm elected or not, I, I don't, I don't need a vehicle, and I don't need a secretary. I've kept up with mouth guard all the way around the whole county in my area without either one of those. And I, I'm fine with that.
Freddie, let me, let me say this, and I've said this, and I'm going to say it again, and I'm going to say it for the next year. This past quarter, we collected 59,000 in coal severance. We budgeted 200,000 a quarter. We collected 59,000. In 2009, we collected 12.484 million in coal and mineral severance. 16 years later, we collected 1.3 million. And over, over that 16 years, ask yourself, you know, fuel's gone up, equipment's gone up, employee benefits have gone up, like health insurance went up 9% last year, 16% the year before. The cost to provide services to the public has gone up, but our revenue has gone down. And I think Frankie would probably agree with me, at some point down the road, it's going to be a problem. Am I, do you disagree with that, Frankie? I mean, because, look, you don't have the revenue coming in to run this operation. Fabian said it, Fabian's even made the statement to me that what we're doing now is not going to be sustainable unless you see a substantial increase in coal severance tax. You're mining less coal right now than you did under the Biden administration. That's a fact. Don't, 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 don't ask me. Do an open records request. Look at the numbers. The export market for eastern Kentucky coal has taken a dramatic impact because of the tariffs. It's a fact. And unless something changes, that you produce more coal, or they stop exporting that coal, I mean, Bubby works for, Bubby's, Bubby was out of work. Are you back to work yet?
Yeah, we're back.
Bubby was out of work for two or three weeks because the company he worked for shut down. I mean, how many people do we know and our friends and family that worked in the mining industry that have lost their jobs in the last few years? I mean, there ain't very many families that haven't been impacted by it. But the simple fact of the matter is, and, and one of the things I'm going to say is this, if we don't get some process, some of these claims processed from FEMA pretty soon, it's going to hit us now. And I want to ask all of my department heads here, to the extent possible, limit overtime. I mean, we're going to have to limit overtime, and we're going to have to do everything we can to, to look at cost constraints, because we, you know, I would rather start making some steps now to sort of just try to contain spending even more than having to start laying people off in a year. Frankie's been through this. At one time, the county had, what, 200, almost 400 people? County had almost 400 employees, and we're down to about 230, 240 right now, and that includes the jail, part-time and seasonal labor. So, but this is going to come home to roost. You can't lose 30 to 40% of your population in most of your main industry without it hitting the county. So, all right. Frankie, go ahead. You're up.
I'll do all these as one motion, Judge. Authorize a transfer from the consolidated bank account to the new payroll impressed bank account at Community Trust Bank in the amount of $1,000, and authorization to order deposit books out of those funds. Authorize a standing order to issue checks for invoices as received from AE Com for the NRCS Home Buyout Program, which is passed through grant funds. Acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerk's 2550 reports for August 2025. Authorize checks for lodging registration expenses for any employee who needs to attend the 2025 CAECO Fall Conference, November 12th through the 14th at the Galt House in Louisville. Authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated September 23rd, plus any other utility bills received before we run checks, which will be tomorrow, and to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 annual jail commissary report.
Is there a motion to authorize the treasurer's business as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott is your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Equestria, discussion, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. We, we can hold off on executive session. Bob, you got anything? I don't know if Freddie can look at it or not. I tell you what, let's go into executive session real quick. Is there, Roy, would you please instruct the public and the county to, on the relevant provisions of Kentucky Open Meeting Law, as it pertains to the entry into executive session?
Yes, Judge, under KRS 61.810, the court is allowed to go in executive session to discuss personnel opinion litigation under paragraph C, proposed opinion litigation under paragraph F, to discuss specific personnel issues.
All right. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott is your second.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion by Atkins, second by Commissioner Scott. Correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we, executive session briefly.
Yes, we execute session briefly.
This time I'll call the court back to order as soon as I get one more commissioner. Freddie, you there?
He had to go.
Okay, Freddie had to go, all right.
Oh, did he?
As soon as Ronald gets here.
He had another appointment?
Well, yeah, they were coming in to do his, take the test.
What, that many to do his surgery?
Tomorrow at eight o'clock.
Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion, I'll make the second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, it's my motion to approve, to acknowledge hiring David Lee West, seasonal grass cutter, Public Works, two H rated pay effective nine eighteen twenty-five, to acknowledge hiring Erica Connors, safety director, at five A rated pay effective nine twenty-eight twenty-five, to acknowledge hiring Ryan West, custodian, at two H rated pay effective nine twenty-eight twenty-five, to acknowledge moving Deborah Chapman to head housekeeper, at two A rated pay effective nine twenty-eight twenty-five, to acknowledge resignation of Danny Witt, effective nine twelve twenty-five, to acknowledge resignation of William McCoy, effective nine nineteen twenty-five, to acknowledge termination of Brian Daniels, effective nine twenty-five twenty-five, and to move Bert Trivet to weed mower, lot one, the same three H rated pay effective nine twenty-four twenty-five, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any questions or discussions seen in that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, all right, anything else come before the court, anybody, any of our department supervisors, Roy, Williams, all right, all right, um, y'all have anything, children? I don't have anything.
I have one thing too.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like for everybody but, uh, my wife in prayers, because she is, she's pretty bad off over in the hospital, and, uh, I believe she's getting just a tad better, but, I mean, I thought that we'd lost her to start with, but everybody pray for her.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Judge, I, next couple weeks, months, gonna be a little rough on my wife, she's gonna have to have two major procedures, one at Pike, one, one at UK, first one being the sixteenth of October, another on the twenty-second, and hopefully we can get this, what caused the stroke, took care of, but we all feel good about it, she still can't see over her left eye, numbness in her left hand, you know, at forty-two-year-old and watch her, it's, uh, I've been with her over half her life now, so it's, uh, taking a toll on the soul, so, just everybody keep her in their prayers too.
Um, and let, I'd like to ask everybody just to remember Commissioner Lewis, Freddie's gotta have surgery tomorrow, uh, we want to remember him and Holly and the rest of the family in our prayers, because it is, it is a big surgery, and wish him the best. Um, so, uh, he, uh, hopefully will, will know something tomorrow on that, and, um, you know, it puts all this other stuff in perspective when you don't have your health or you've got somebody that you care about that's, that's struggling, so, um...
Judge, something I've realized, it is quality of time spent versus quantity, in the last little bit, if you get to spend time with somebody, enjoy it, 'cause the quality of that time's worth spending eternity, you know, with somebody, you know, whatever ever means you spend is sacred.
Well, we've had a, uh, it's been a tough year on a lot of people.
Yeah.
And, um, but, uh, I want to thank all of the staff, we've got a great team, everybody's worked hard, we've accomplished a lot, and, um, I do need to speak to Fabian after the court meeting real quick, um, so, that being said, if there's no other business coming before the court, now you want to come up and close us out with a, uh, word of prayer, and then we will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shout and bow for prayer, dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you, Lord, where we thank you for this day that you've given us, and Lord we thank you for the members of this court, dear Lord, and the representation that they have, uh, for our county, and Lord we ask that, uh, at this time, that you be with, uh, Ronald's wife, dear Lord, uh, be with Bubby's wife, Lord, and we also ask that you, um, be with Freddie, uh, the doctors, nurses, technicians, as they treat each and every one of them, dear Lord, that, uh, you would equip them with each and everything that they need, give them a steadiness of hand, Lord help their eyes, their ears, to be able to hear and understand and see what, uh, you've laid out there before them, dear Lord, Lord I pray that, uh, you bless, uh, each and every household that's represented here, dear Lord, and, uh, that for the people of Pike County, dear Lord, as we go on, that, um, you'll continue to watch over us, Lord we just ask that you watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us, and give us traveling mercies in your precious and holiest of names, and amen.
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 Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, I'll make the second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned. Hey, Fabian.